It's me, Norah. Thank you all for being with us this evening. And as we typically do, we'll go ahead and start with an invocation if you bow your heads with me. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together. We thank you for the opportunity to live in a country that we can gather together and do the people's work. Father, we pray that you will lead, guide, and direct all of our actions tonight. May it all be pleasing to you, and may it be pleasing to you as we go forward and carry out what you've taught us to do in being good neighbors, taking care of each other, living in a community that looks out for one another. Father, we pray that we keep you in the center of all that we do. Thank you for everything that you do for us. We pray for our military, both foreign and domestic. We pray, Lord, that you'll be with them, protect them, and provide for their families. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Join us for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberal, and justiciable.
All right. That will take us to an introduction.
Mr. Goschicki would come forward, please, and introduce our new Assistant Public Works Director.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manager. Board, Mr. Chairman, I'm really pleased to introduce to you tonight, to the public listening in, our new Assistant Director of Public Works, Richard McMillan. Richard comes to us most recently from the city of High Point, where he served as the Assistant Director of Public Services. Graduate of NC State University, 26 years of experience in the public sector here in North Carolina, in the water, wastewater, solid waste, transportation, all around Public Works program. Has both an operational background as well as an engineering background. He is a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina. So he's worked in the engineering side, the construction side, the operations side. We're really pleased to have him on board. He served in a number of senior leadership roles with several of the major cities in the state, including City of Charlotte with Charlotte Mecklenburg Utilities, Mooresville, High Point that he's with right now, that he was with, Winston-Salem. Really great experience, happy to have him here.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again for having me here this evening. I look forward to serving the citizens of Union County and the Board as best I can and giving you everything you need.
Thank you much, welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here.
We did have Richard out in the field today, wasn't expecting to be here, so...
That's all right. We're glad knowing he works. All right, that'll take us to number two, our public hearing. I'll move that we open the public hearing. Turn it over to Mr. Black.
If I could get the screen to come down? I'm going to set some easels up for the...
May I?
The Franklin and Allison Howey rezoning petition. It's petition 001104. The rezoning classification is requesting a change from R-20, which is residential, to a PUD 14. Now, PUD 14 is a planned unit development, and it has the characteristics of three zoning districts, an R-10, and R-6, and a B-2. I'll get into that a little bit more in detail. The rezoning petition is for tax parcel number 09042011AC and D, and tax parcel 06003014 A, B, and C, which contains about 105.67 acres. The property is located on Highway 84 and Airport Road, and is within Monroe and Sandy Ridge Townships. If you can see from this map here, let me point her to work. The raspberry-looking color that you see, this to the left here, and at the top left-hand corner and across here, this property is within the town of Wesley Chapel. At the very right-hand corner, this great-looking piece here, that's within the town of Monroe. The rest of the land in that, you see in this particular picture, is all within Union County. Very quickly, at the very top here, where Airport Road and the old Gold Mine used to come together, you'll see a little bit of B-4. If you'll come on down along Gold Mine, this light purple or blue area here, that's light industrial in the county. The yellow here, all this through, excuse me, it should be a light green here. This light green in here is R-820. And then along on the north side of 84, this yellow, the subject parcel, which is right here, and this parcel here, all the light yellow, that's also R-820. And then across the road, these large pieces over here are all R-40. So you can see that there's a good amount of different zoning, but most all of it is in the residential categories, either R-820 or R-40, half-acre or acre lots. If you'll move to this one, I think they started construction, started working out there last Friday, but where Airport Road comes into 84, the NC DOT is constructing a traffic circle around about. And I wanted to show you this because it doesn't directly impact the property, but it's very close by. As you can see here, it's on the property adjacent to it. They'll realign 84, excuse me, they'll realign Airport Road where it comes in at a 90-degree angle. That'll be a traffic circle. Right now, the speed limit along there is about 55 miles an hour, probably stay somewhere in that range, but to get through that traffic circle, it'll slow traffic down a little bit. So I thought that was an important thing that's happening. And I think the memo said that they hope to have that opening working by September the 8th. So they're on a pretty fast schedule, so that improvement should be up and running in about two months. Here's an aerial of the area, and again, the property is outlined in this light mint-green here. And you can see that it's vacant fields. At various times, it's been farmed. Across on the south side of 84, there's also some large vacant fields. In the lower right-hand corner, this is very tip, this is St. John's Forest. Right above it is the villages of Wesley Chapel. This piece in here is, ooh, just went blank. That is, oh, Winsley Park. And then right above it is Hampton Meadows. So to the north of it, there's a good bit of residential. Then along 84 and south of it, you can see the area is mostly undeveloped. The existing land use, let me start up here in the other right-hand corner. This very red piece right here, that's in the county, and that's zone commercial. I mean, it's a commercial use. It was a daycare at one time. Right now, it's vacant. The piece right next to it on Airport Road, the next purple piece is Turbo Mecca. The piece below it on the opposite side of Gold Mine is a large warehouse spec-type building. The yellow, you notice a good bit of yellow in here. All this yellow in here is single-family residential. And then the gray or cream colored, all that is vacant property. I will point out that this piece up here, on the opposite side of Airport Road, has preliminary approval for subdivision. Let me point that out again. This piece right here, we have preliminary approval for 110 lots on that piece. We also have a piece coming to the planning board tomorrow night for rezoning from R-40 to R-20 for this piece here. So there's a lot of activity, a lot of movement in this area. There's the new roads, a lot of changes there. The proposed land use, let me go through this real quickly. The colors, again, the top right-hand piece, this up here is Monroe. Their future land use is industrial. Our land use, this piece here and piece here, is also industrial. This piece here, along through here, is medium residential, you know, 1 to 2.5 to the acre. The large yellow piece is, our plan is projecting 0 to 1. On the corner here, this piece here, and up around here, that's Wesley Chapel. That piece color is 0 to 1, and the light, well, it's light green here, is 1 to 2.5. So you can see, other than the industrial at the top, that both the county and Monroe are projecting for industrial, the rest of the area is projected to be, you know, low to moderate density residential. The zoning, again, the existing zoning is R-20, that's 20,000 square foot lots. The PUD 14 is designed to accommodate the characteristics of three different zoning districts. There's an R-10, which is considered the low-density. There's R-6, which is considered the medium or high-density, and there's a commercial element to it. I'd say the R-10 is 10,000 square foot lots, a single-family, medium-density. The R-6 is 6,000 square foot lots, and it's designed to accommodate not only single-family, but two-family and multifamily developments. And the B-4 is a community business for small-scale businesses in rural areas. And once again, I'll point out that considering the rezoning, we need to consider, within the PUD 14, the range of uses and densities that are allowed in that. Let me go to this next slide to elaborate a little bit more on that. Once again, the R-20 is 20,000 square foot lots. That calculates into a little over two units to the acre. So on this piece of property, there's, like I say, 105 acres. There's somewhere, you know, the gross potential to be about 230 lots on that R-20 parcel. The PUD 14 has two residential districts. The R-10 has, its density is about a little over four units per acre. The R-6 is 6,000 square foot lots, is a little over seven. So if you combine those two together, and the PUD 14 also has a ceiling on the amount of R-6. In other words, on this site, the R-6 can only be 35%. So if you had 105 acres, and you converted 35% of that 105 acres, you're talking 36, 37 acres. The B-2 is also limited to 10%. So out of 100 acres, you could have about 10 acres business. So if you take the top piece, the R-10, which can be about 55%, so that'd give you about 55 acres. You combine that with the R-6, which would be about 36 acres, you could have somewhere, it's possible to have somewhere the potential of over 500 units. Then on the B-2 piece, it's 10 acres, and B-2, the maximum range for square footage in the B-2 is 120,000 square feet. So you can see the difference between what's allowed now and what would be allowed with the PUD 14. The planning board heard this on July 1st of this year. Mr. Ross and Ms. Sutherland, representing the petitioner, presented their rezoning requests. Three citizens spoke at the meeting. Their concerns were typical concerns you would have from a upzoning. They were concerned about the impact on schools. They talked about traffic. And they also mentioned stuff about fire protection and water pressure. The planning board's, planning staff's recommendation, you know, once again, our recommendation is based on that chart. We evaluate each question. Is it favorable for rezoning or unfavorable? Scoring the points, it was real close, but it was unfavorable to rezon based on a score of 140 against a favorable score of 130. I think I skipped one. The plant, let me point out, the planning board's recommendation was five to two against it also. So it's planning staff and planning board both. The favorable characteristics, it's located, the water main is located in 84, in Airport Roads. Sewer passes right through the middle of the property. It has good road frontage on both NC 84 and Airport Road. The unfavorable ones, and the biggest one here, was it wasn't in conformity with the adopted land use plan. The projected land use plan for this area is calling between 1 and 2 and 1/2 units per acre, with no commercial in the immediate area. The PUD 14 has the development potential for residential density somewhere between, you know, 4 to the acre, up to 7 to the acre in that R-6, and a commercial site of around 10 acres. The area is, the present land use in the area is low to medium-density residential. The predominant zoning in the area is low to medium-density residential. And Union County schools wrote back, and the impact on the schools, I think it was that there was that Monroe Middle would reach its, it would reach its, let me make sure I get this particular part right. It would reach its, whoop, bear with me one second. Yeah, Monroe Middle could approach its watch level in 2018, and Monroe High would pass and approach the cap level in 2017. So you see that kind of impact on the schools. The other element that kind of entered into a staff's recommendation was the fact that we were working on a new unified development ordinance. That ordinance will eliminate the PUD district. The draft we have right now, the PUD district would go away. It would be replaced by a new master plan district. The new ordinance would also include this legislative conditional zoning process, which would require a detailed plan that specifies the actual uses intended for the property and the regulations and conditions that govern development. In other words, you could have a site plan that shows the location of the lots, a street layout, location of the business, how much square footage that they were proposing there, where the access points were, where the screening, those kinds of things. And those would be detailed, and that would become basically the ordinance for that particular piece of property. With both those improvements, with the master plan district and with the legislative conditional rezoning type process, we feel like that those two tools will better serve the county. Our hope is to have that new ordinance in place by November this year. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dick. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Black?
I just want to say just a couple things.
All right.
There was a question concerning, in our current ordinance, and actually in just about every ordinance, no matter when you adopt it, there's a provision for when a rezoning is denied. So if a rezoning is denied, most ordinances have a provision that you have to wait 12 months before you can reapply for that same zoning classification. If you had a completely different plan, you could come forward with it, but if it's the same or very similar plan, you'd have to wait 12 months. We've talked to legal counsel, and staff has gone over this, and because the UDO is significantly different, and it offers a process that the applicant would not have to them at this time, we believe and certainly would agree that the applicant would not have to wait 12 months if the rezoning were actually to be denied. They would be able to come back under the new UDO and file for a conditional zoning, not a standard straight rezoning, because again, that would be an issue, but the conditional zoning, because that's a different process that's not afforded to the applicant at this time. So we believe that that is a process that would be allowed for the applicant to go through. Also, just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Black said, and that is, our biggest concern is not with the project itself. The project seems to be a good project. Our concern is that it would be an automatically grandfathered use that we would no longer have in our regulations. We're trying to eliminate PUDs and go to more of a master plan development. We think that's a better process. The PUD does not allow this board to have any input into site-specific guidelines. Essentially, you have to prove the PUD as it is. And I'm not saying the applicant would do this, but the applicant could say, "Well, I'm planning on putting all single-family houses, but R-6 allows multifamily." And if you approve the PUD with R-6 in it, then a new owner could come back and put in multifamily in there. So the property owners adjacent to that really don't know exactly what they're going to get under the PUD process until a site plan comes into the planning board, and that really can't be denied as long as it fits the R-6 category. So that was our biggest concern, is being able to have something to nail down, "This is what I'm asking for, this is what you'll get, this is what the neighbors know they'll get out of it." So that was our biggest issue. It's not the project itself. I'm going to move this so the applicant can put some boards out here and let them do their part.
All right. That'll lead us to our folks signed up to speak in the public hearing, Mr. John Ross.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Ross with Eagle Engineering, 2013 AE Van Buren Avenue in Indian Trail, North Carolina. Also here with me this evening is Mr. Van Sutherland, representing the Moza Group, and together we are representing the petitioner for the request that is before you. First of all, I'd say thanks to each of you for the time that you commit to serve in our county. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Mr. Black and Mr. Matthews for their good job in reviewing and assessing this important project. What we are requesting this evening is a PUD, as defined by your current zoning ordinance, Section 138. I'm not going to go back and repeat all the details of what a PUD is. I think they've done a very, very fine job of that. We are requesting PUD 14, which allows for up to 55% of R-10 development, 35% of R-6 development, and then up to 10% of commercial development. We feel like that is a good fit for this piece of property, for this corridor. These are two major thoroughfares. This is a busy intersection. DOT recognizes and represents that, and that's how you've seen the roundabout improvements in the process right now. I wish we could get 500 lots. That's just not practical or feasible on 100-acre piece of property. With our layout, which you see on a much, very small scale here, we're less than 200 single-family lots. And Brian, I appreciate what you say, Mr. Matthews, I appreciate what you say. While we couldn't be held, yes, the petitioner will commit. This is a single-family residential development, not duplexes, not multifamily. These are single-family individual residential units. I would like to point out something that I think is important, and that is the surrounding land uses. We talked about St. John's Forest, the villages at Wesley Chapel. I picked not the cul-de-sac lots, but random lots from these adjacent residential components. This .235 acre parcel, that is an R-10 lot, that's 10,000 square feet. This is an R-8 lot, 8,000 square feet. This is an R-6 lot, again, adjoining our property and the existing developments that surround us. We are very, very consistent with our proposed residential development with the surrounding land uses. We have committed to open spaces. We have water quality that we have to commit to. There's, again, all of that yields to about, a little less than 200 residential lots, is what we have presented on our concept plan. In the planning board discussions, it did come about, you know, we can't, I guess, be held to what you see here as being commercial, R-6 and R-10. We are committed that it makes sense that the commercial is at the intersection, that the higher density is the buffer between the commercial and the adjoining, and our R-10 development is the balance of the site. I'm going to introduce Van in just one moment, but I do want to hit just a couple points that came up during our discussions. First of all, and I believe there's a resident here this evening that may speak specifically to the fire districts in the area. The petitioner is, first of all, we have a little over 27 acres of open space. By our calculations, requirement would be about 25. We have about 2 acres of open space beyond what by code would be required. The petitioner is to assist with resolving the fire district issue. The petitioner is willing to commit up to 2 acres for use by the county as a volunteer fire department in the long-range planning. Traffic is an issue, and we know that. DOT sees this as an important corridor, and that's why there are improvements underway right now. We recognize that in the site plan process and the construction document development process, we will be doing a traffic impact analysis. The results of that analysis will be implemented as we make our connections, our driveway connections. So we anticipate there will be roadway improvements on Airport Road or on Highway 84. We recognize that. And then a third concern that was brought about was water pressure in the area. I was not aware of there being an issue. We certainly recognize that when we submit our sketch plan, which is the first process in the construction document development, when we submit our sketch plan to Public Works, they will forward it on to their consultant, who will do a model of this system and advises if there are any infrastructure improvements to be made. We recognize that. We just understand that's part of our responsibility and part of the process. Unless there are specific questions, to me, I'm going to step aside, let Mr. Sutherland speak, and if something does come up, I will certainly make myself available.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right. Mr. Sutherland?
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
We have a couple exhibits, and also I've got some handouts that may help the commissioners with the data behind it. And again, Chairman and the council commissioners, we thank you very much for the time and the consideration, and what we'd like to do tonight is talk a little bit about the overall need for the project as it relates to the commercial, also some of the planning that would go behind it. Beyond that, some facts that would document not just the demand and need for the retail, but also how it might impact schools or not impact the schools. So the handouts you're going to receive are going to be, first of all, the first overview, this talks really to the commercial. Next gets into the number of houses and some permits and some data related back to the schools. You know, I think when we see what's happened with the airport in general, that has been, you know, quite a blessing for the county, certainly going forward. It's one of the top concentrations of aerospace manufacturing, South Peacock Community College. A lot of great things are coming out of that area. And I think we all recognize that for the county, to plan around it and prepare for it, is certainly an important thing, and that's what we're hoping to do tonight. As was mentioned, in the PUD, there will only be 10 acres of commercial land, which is not a very large commercial project to start with. It typically would be some form of soft or light neighborhood commercial-type development. Give a few facts on the left side of your handout. You're going to see a graph that really portrays the difference in the demand and supply. In our industry, we have, we're fortunate to get some of the best demographics in the world, in most cases, the best, as it relates to facts. One of them is called a gap analysis, and it separates the demand and supply in a given area, and we can run it through either polygons or radiuses. This happens to be done in a three- and five-mile radius. I'll give you a few facts, and again, this will be in your backup over there, too. In just a three-mile radius, there is a gap of demand and supply of $241 million. In a three-mile radius, 100, excuse me, that's a five-mile, a three-mile, $179 million. That's what they call a 54% leakage, which means people are driving out of the area to service their needs. It comes back to tax base for the county, servicing the community, in a lot of cases, reducing traffic because they can actually eat and shop closer than having to travel to it. So there are some very strong economic benefits for a small, even just a small 10-acre shopping center. You might ask, "Well, what type uses would be there?" Our reports really highlight what's missing, and ironically, even health and personal care. There's a $15 million gap where the demand exceeds the supply just in a five-mile area, just in three miles, it's 13, over $13 million. And it goes on and on. Total food and drink, as we mentioned before, is a big category as well, but it can add convenience, tax base, and certainly reduce some traffic as well for the shoppers in the immediate area. What you might see in the 10 acres of commercial, again, probably be some kind of light commercial. There's not enough room for anything large. A big box is not going to really fit there. You can almost visualize some small junior box, when I say box, it max, it could be maybe 28,000 feet, and then some out parcels, probably more shop space, retail space, and it's professional space.
Then we'd like to talk a little bit of, is there any question of the commercial for us before we move back into the house side of this?
Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Hamilton?
The small box that you spoke of, would that be example, like grocery store, like a Harris Teeter, is that, I mean, what?
Probably not, in that that's more of a 48,000-foot kind of building. And our analysis shows large department stores are actually over-serviced, even though you're driving to Monroe Mall to get them. The Walmarts and I think, they don't fit. What does fit are the smaller neighborhood-type things. And I doubt it would happen, but the largest thing you could almost visualize would be about a 28,000-foot small, like the smallest prototype for a grocery store. That's probably unlikely, even though there's a demand there for it, it's probably unlikely they would go there. Probably more, I would think, more shop, small shop space and neighborhood services. We wanted to share a little bit about two, some of the facts on the housing itself. In a three-mile radius, the average home price is $238,000. The average income in the area in a seven-mile radius is $62,857. We've got some projections for you to do within the year of 2018. With the cost of infrastructure, with the fact that our plan's showing, I think, jobs 194 units. That's large enough that the home builders that we've talked to would probably have a nicer... probably have a nice amenity package. So if you take the cost of the land, the amenity package, infrastructure, which is increasing daily it seems, we don't know exactly what the number would be, it's hard to imagine, it may be much different than the average or above, that might be some type of a pipe housing that we've got, which certainly lends itself to a nice, single-family residential project. We wanted to share a little bit on the schools, after our last meeting, we actually went to Union County Public Schools to get some facts, and just as one of your handouts, as well as the data we got from the city schools, from Union County Schools. This will show the three schools that are serviced by this project. We've got Rocky River Elementary, Monroe Middle, and Monroe High. Based on the facts that we got from Union County Public Schools, we put down cap levels where they are currently and where they would be in 2018, 2019. We also looked at City Monroe to see what their permits are. We thought that was kind of interesting, because primarily, ours proposed subdivision is being poured into Monroe schools, most others surrounding this are going to some value elsewhere. So Monroe has very small permits in general, there's 20-something in 2012, they bumped up to 60-something, maybe seven or so, 13, right there, another 40-something permits. Ironically, they're done, they're involutions per year, pull those numbers down, they've already done 11 involition permits so far this year. So it doesn't seem like it's going to be unruly as far as new homes being into these schools. Cap rates, cap levels, see, just viable, as well as what's to be imported inside Monroe as far as the permits. And with that, I guess we'd like to answer any further questions.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sutherd.
All right. That will end our, there are no other speakers, so that will end our public hearing. And that will take us to our informal comments. Leave, make sure that's right. That is correct, and we have no one signed up to speak, that will take us to our additions, deletions, and to our adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With no public comments, and the presentations we've seen, and I know I personally visited this, I'd make a recommendation, we go ahead and vote on this tonight?
Vote on the item for the public hearing?
That's correct. There's no sense tying these gentlemen up, coming back again just for a vote.
I have been advised, we do have the consistency statements, is that correct?
Please, the order to approve a land use ordinance amendment has to have a consistency statement by state statute, because it's not the board's practice to approve these on the first night, that's not in your packet. I could certainly, if you want to recess, I can proceed and try to prepare that now if you'd like, or you can bring it back next meeting, but you do have to have that statement.
All right. What's your flavor, gentlemen? You want to recess, or you want to put it on the next agenda?
Are we talking about a five-minute recess?
It'll take you a long time. But if we could take a minute, fifteen, twenty, nine, ten, we could have started from the city.
Go ahead and take care of that for us, Jeff. All right. So we'll add that on to the agenda under, give me a minute here, under new business, we'll make that 6A. Any other additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That'll take us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That'll take us to item number six, under old business, land use ordinance text amendment. I'll turn that over to whoever wants to talk about it.
At your last meeting, staff presented the text amendment, does the board have additional questions of Mr. Matthews?
No, I don't. Anybody here have any questions? If you want, if you feel so inclined.
I do.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we consider, we approve the text amendment and adopt applicable consistency statement.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Manager and I spoke with this afternoon, the two different varieties of this by right, which means that your department approves it, or then we, or the other method?
Yes, sir, there are two versions, the staff version, which is currently, we're suggesting that that be a special use permit, which would be approved by the Board of Adjustment during a special hearing, and then the applicant's version is a by right, which means that comes directly to the staff, and we would approve it based on those few things that were listed on the version there. So obviously, they would have to have something from the state saying they meet the state's requirements, but those would be the only things that we would review for that. And I meant to say this earlier, and I apologize, there was a question previously about the ability to sort of do both, require a special use permit in some situations, or a by right in other situations, and that is certainly available, however, in this particular circumstance, it would not work under the current ordinance, there would be a significant rewrite to make that work, which is why you have just two different versions. In the UDO, we actually will have a provision in the UDO where temporary uses will actually be allowed for smaller ones by right through the staff, and then for larger-type things through a special use permit. But that's in the UDO, that won't be coming to you until, you know, October for a possible adoption. So currently, it's really by right or special use, that's the only way we could make it fit within the ordinance as it is.
Any other questions? We need to clarify on our...
Yes, we would need to know whether the text amendment was by right or a special use permit for this particular text amendment.
My motion, as I received, would be by right.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
One?
All right. That will take us to a point where we will take a 15-minute recess, we will reconvene here at about 10-tail, 5-tail.